Call to order this planning commission meeting for Oconee County, South Carolina at 6:00 on Monday, May the 5th. Thank you everybody for being here. Uh, you did the invitation before me.
Lord, heaven and father, thank you for blessing us with such a beautiful day and allowing us to come together. Please, Lord, give us the wisdom and knowledge to know thy will, the strength and courage to carry out thy will, discernment when dealing with man, and the humility to accept those things which we cannot change. Lord, guide us in everything we do and let us put you first. In his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, now we have on the agenda approval of the minutes from April 20, verse 145. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, comments. All in favor? Aye. Okay, now I have public.
Before we go to public comments, can we have a motion to amend the agenda to allow county attorney comments now?
Do we have a county attorney here?
He's gonna be by far, he could not make it tonight, but does.
Okay, a motion to allow the county attorney to provide comments. Yeah, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
It's unanimous.
Is he going to do that now before public comment or?
Yes, he was trying to, he's got another commitment, so he was trying to get. You are on speaker.
Hello, and thank you, planning commission, for letting me parachute in.
Speak up.
In Washington, I didn't have a conflict. I just wanted to really briefly, I know y'all have a lot to talk about, highlight what I did. You'll see, I think, on page 44, if you key out the backups, these are the motions that Mr. Hayden put forward that will pass. So, present 26-2, this is a little bit more, the reduction from private drives from 20 to 20. And then only paragraph, which is B4, I had some discretionary language. I added, that's not verbatim for Mr. Hayden, I just wanted to point that out, that's what I took to, to be what he was aiming for. Otherwise, it's just straightforward. And I just wanted to give a report on that aspect of what I was designed to do. Otherwise, as far as the appeals and such, I gave you those materials, we can take that up, it's on the agenda at a future meeting. So just to summarize that, I appreciate you, y'all let me jump in.
So I actually have a question for Mr. Rook, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you, being as you've got to jump off here, would you mind telling the people that are here tonight, the difference between public and private roadways? And what, what rights and privileges the public have when it comes to private roadways?
Yes, in general terms, because there's gonna be different grades of these on different continuums and different interests given, but the plain demarcation of public roadway, a public road versus private road, public is gonna be maintained by the public, be it the county, municipality, or the state, for the travel in public, meaning there's gonna be no restrictions, obviously, aside from traffic laws on who can access and who cannot. Private roads, this similarly, aren't just gonna be for those persons who have the right of access. And a subdivision, if it's not taken into public road system, it's gonna be people within the subdivision, that's why they can put gates up in certain subdivisions, those roads aren't publicly available. So they're not taken into municipality, county, or state, or the entire traveling public. So there's, you know, by individuals operated for.
Correct. Do they have to adhere to the state traffic laws?
As far as, to be honest, I know that there's a number of laws that they will get persecuted on on private property, yes.
Or is the, uh, did you look up the code of law in the backup material?
Oh, as far as, yeah, adopting?
Yes.
I didn't look it up, I looked at the provision that was included with the backup, where you can, such a condition, the state, they have the states that, um, such your rules apply, yes. Didn't look it up, but I did read it.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I was just curious, maybe you can review that and get back with us at another time.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Are you seeing if we can have something similar to this for the county or private roads?
No, it was actually stating, uh, the state went, called out for private roads, stated that for chapter seven, I'm sorry, 1, 3, 5, 7, and 9, to be, uh, uh, held or authorized them, the permission for those chapters to be applicable to the people that travel on those roads, that the property owners would have to adopt and basically petition the sheriff to patrol those roads. And without that, the sheriff's department had no authority to, uh, let's say they had an accident on those roads, it's strictly a civil matter because it's a private road, and it takes that authority away from the sheriff's department unless they adopt that.
Okay, I think there's a little bit more to that, and what I want to do is, if you wanted some county road rules to apply to private roads, but if you let break down chapters 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, and 10, those contests have the state, um, part of transportation and sled enforced, and how the county could have done, uh, rostered, I'll do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, public comment for non-agenda items. So, I'll just remind people, public comments, hold up the little sign when there's four minutes elapsed, and then when five minutes has elapsed, we'll hold up the red. And since I don't have a cell phone, Mr. Colley will be helping me on that.
Okay.
Or me.
I'd rather you do it, that way I can listen.
Let Mr. Colley do it, since he's there. Uh, for non-agenda items, we have one person signed up, Mr. Tom Markovich.
Thank you, for the record, Tom Markovich. Um, this should take maybe 30 seconds. Maybe I misheard, but I thought at the last meeting, y'all had some discussion about comprehensive plans, and you talked about the 210 and the, and 220, and it sounded like we weren't referencing anything before that. We had a comprehensive plan before 2010, and I know, in fact, I've got, I thought we had one from the late, uh, 1990s. I actually have a copy of 2006 comprehensive plan, so I just want y'all to be aware of that, so. I know we were working on a revision in 2004. Anyway, thank you.
That's all, that's all, the two letters of those for the, uh?
There are four, the, uh?
The forehand change?
I made.
Okay. So it closes commission member, or, or public comments? Commission member comments?
Yeah, I have a, just a couple of comments, I wanna just make sure I'm understanding the situation, this discussion about right of ways and private roads, and, um, and for the public to, uh, just to maybe provide some clarity. A pri, what is a pri, what is a right of way for and what is it doing? A right of way provides space for utilities, water, gas, electricity, internet, and sewer. These are all modern conveniences that we enjoy. A right of way provides space for future widening of the roads. Right of ways are home to ditches, which keep our roads healthy because it gives water a place to run off to. Right of ways provide space for safety features such as stop signs, speed limit signs, fire hydrants, et cetera. Our cop plan asks that we continue the coordination of the provision of water, sewer, and electricity, and that's found in chapter seven. During the 2023 annual review for council, council has an initiative to give support to continue the expansion of broadband connectivity in rural areas, and invest, and is intending to invest approximately $150 million doing so. This initiative needs a right of way. Lastly, it was said by Chief Smith and Deputy Chief Livingston that our firefighters need space to do their job. A concern was brought up that maybe the right of ways are a government overreach and property rights violation. If this were true, a right of way would be a violation of our Fifth Amendment rights. I believe this claim can be put to rest by the severability clause, which is found in our chapter one, section 16, and at the end of pretty much every ordinance that's ever been written. And basically what it says, if there's any phrase, paragraph, clause, or sentence that's found to be unconstitutional, you can cut it out. The fact that right of ways have been part of our, our ordinances for decades and still remains tells me that they are indeed constitutional. A right of way provides oversight to a developer. There's two examples that come to mind in Oconee County that suffered the consequences when there was no developer with this oversight. Back in the mid 70s, Port Bass, January 16th, 1975, citizens came to talk about their property to council and complained about the conditions of their road, that was then referred to the Public Works Committee. And in the 2000, early 2000s, Stone Pond, Stone Pond had a developer that did not get a land permit or a construction permit and built the neighborhood. Roads crumbled, the Stone Pond flooded, it got so bad that, um, the residents, a special tax district had to be set up so the residents could pay back the county for the repairs of that neighborhood. If the planning commission is to make a change, planning, uh, elements are based on comprehensive surveys and studies. So where are the studies and where are the surveys? How do we know changing our right of ways, removing our right of ways are good for the citizens of Oconee County? How do we know there's a problem? It seems we got ahead of ourselves and maybe missed a step in our last meeting. Twice, um, in recent months, the planning commission requested that a letter be sent to homeowners to get their opinion about a possible change we were gonna do. In 2024, it was to present to a street residence whose property abutted up against the road that we were considering maybe identifying as a scenic highway. Again, in March of this year, the, the planning commission sent a letter to homeowners to ask their opinion about a street name change in the neighborhood. In the spirit of consistency, we should send such a letter maybe to homeowners and ask their opinion about right of ways and living with right of ways. There is historic precedent for writing such a letter. In February of 2009, a resident in Conros or Comros, however you say it, Point subdivision, started a petition to have the county stop cutting trees in their right of way. This was an issue, it was brought to the transportation committee meeting. Homeowner decide, uh, the, uh, transportation committee chairman and Matt Kelly at the time, who was the county engineer, decided to send a letter to those residents in Conros, Point subdivision, and ask if they wanted the trees to be, if the county should continue to maintain the right of way. Seventy-six homeowners were mailed, 45 responses came back, and only one said, "Stop cutting the trees," so the county continued to maintain the right of way. Public feedback is important, no one from the community is asking this commission to make a change. Our experts tell us the right of way is important for first responders to do their job, right of ways keep the future in mind by providing space for road expansion if needed, space for ditches, ditches to keep our roads healthy, and space to give us the modern conveniences that we all enjoy. While the citizens of the county can rest assured that their constitutional rights are safeguarded by the severability clause, and a right of way does not violate the Fifth Amendment. There are thousands of homeowners with a right of way in the county, any change to a right of way would have an all-encompassing effect on the county. Such a change requires feedback. Let's hear from the people on this important issue. Thank you, that's the end of my comment.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would agree with you when it deals with public roads, uh, but we're dealing with private roads. And private roads is a contract that's made between private property owners on how they gonna ingress and egress from those properties. They come up with a solution for the problem. They decide what benefits them the most. Well, I am in agreement, when it comes to planned subdivisions, they should be stormwater, site plan, they should be right of ways for utilities, and they should be a right of way for the roads. I don't think they all have to be together, but I think the big problem is, when I say subdivision, everybody's got an image in their mind that pops up, and it's this nice row houses that are equally set back from the road. There's a sign at the entrance telling us what the subdivision's name is to be called. But in all actuality, there's another type of subdivision in this county, a subdividing of land. And it's out there in the backsides of the county, on dirt roads, where a family has sold off parcels or given parcels to their children. And now, you drive down through there, and you see a driveway, maybe no house, because the driveway's a good, maybe quarter mile long, getting into the, where their house is at. Go another little step, you have another house that might sit next to the road, and as you go on down, they might be 15 houses on that road, where that community has developed over time. Why should they be held to the same standards when the next person builds as a planned, developed subdivision? They should not. All of those individuals had come up and planned and are at peace with each other in that community without our oversight. Many roads that we travel on today here in this county were not planned roads. They were roads, there, some were called former, form-to-market roads, uh, a lot of them were just roads so they could get from resident to resident, that were taken over by the state at one time, and then turned back over to the county. So I think you and I are on the same page, it's just we don't understand the difference, or we have not come to understand the difference between the two types of land that is subdivided.
Any other commission comments? Okay, now on the agenda, we have the comprehensive plan, five-year update with Appalachian Council governments. Thank you for being here.
Evening, everybody. And, uh, appreciate y'all having me here, I wanted, I know y'all have a little bit in your packet, and then I passed a little bit more out. Um, I do wanna start off by saying I kinda apologize, I know we talked back last fall about us getting started earlier this year, and we had some things that sent us back in our office, so hadn't jumped into it full force as early as we had hoped to, so a little behind on that. But tonight, I just kinda wanna talk about sort of the kickoff for this, and then what to think about, um, the one section you got in your packet that looked at goals, objectives, strategies, review. That's really at the heart of what the review of any complaint is, it's a look-in period for you guys to assess, what did we say we wanted to do, how much progress we have made, what do we need to tweak, you know, what, what maybe has changed since then? Uh, you know, when you're talking about a comprehensive plan that has a 10-year planning cycle, but really a 20-year window, five years is a pretty short timeframe, so, you know, you don't always see a lot of major shifts and everything, but you do have a feel as a planning commission, what you see in your everyday life, what you think is happening, that may be positive, may be negative, but moving towards these goals. And this review I gave you, which was not short, sorry, um, but I did try and take what was a very, you know, stale kind of form, uh, table of goals, objectives, and strategies, and break it down into a better review that kinda summarizes your goals and objectives, and then looks at some of the strategies that you did, so you guys would have a chance to kinda look at what the theme of what you were trying to achieve in that plan update was. So, um, and you know, as you approach it, what I hope you guys look at it from is the standpoint of, okay, are these still our goals? Are these strategies working? Did they not work? We'll talk about some of that too, and some of the data we look at that supports that, but some of that's, we want the feedback you guys have about what you see happening on a daily basis. Tried to kinda break them into categories, you know, look at population growth and community well-being, that's kind of one theme, housing and economic development is a similar theme, then you have community facilities and transportation, and then land use and environmental conservation kinda fit. And so as we kinda work through things, we'll, we'll begin to pair them into that, but the exercise is really supposed to be kind of an evaluation of progress, of what, what you think is happening in your review of the goals and everything, so you can see if they're still relevant to the community as we go through this, so. And with that, just as an example, the second, the, the handout that you got tonight, that I know you haven't any time to look at, element section review, it kinda, we tried to give, looking at that was to give highlights of some of the elements and what things we've seen happen, we're looking at the data, we're trying to pick out the highlights, not doing a deep dive into every table in that comprehensive plan and coming to talk to you about it, because I don't think that serves you very well. Um, some of the things, you know, within a five-year period, like I said, some of those numbers don't move the needle to, you know, be able to determine change, but we have tried to do is look at the things that have changed and highlight some of those and go through that, so this is for your review as we go through, but, and then I tried to link kinda those highlights to the housing goals and objectives that you had, not every strategy, but like, here's the things that you made progress in, here's the things that maybe didn't make progress, how they, they fit. Like I said, not all the data is gonna show any, any discernible movement in certain things. We tried to pull out what was relevant to each of those sections, right now, economy, housing, and transportation are in this one, we'll have additional ones for you moving forward, but didn't wanna inundate you with too much. I think, for those that had a chance to look at that first section, the goals, objectives, strategy review, I would be just curious about your initial thoughts on the cop plan, what you think is, is good, i- it's still relevant, what you think might not be relevant, what you might see changing that you wanna consider, um, in the future? You know, uh, as an anecdote, you know, clearly, when you talk about housing, one of the things you had in your housing strategies was look for funding for housing rehab. There's not a lot of money out there for housing rehab, but since Helene, there will be some money out there for housing rehab, it'll come through the state office of resiliency, it's a program they're gonna be starting up probably this summer that people can apply for, but maybe there's new opportunities, but I, you know, when you look at it, Helene's a big change, had a lot of impact, I don't know if it had as much on y'all as maybe Greenville or Spartanburg, Pickens, but I'm not sure, honestly, but those kinda things happen in between the time you set all these strategies and what's going on that might have changed your focus on what needs to happen, so that's just an anecdote of, you know, things that might have changed, so I'm just kinda curious, your initial thoughts on things that have changed, things you wanna be able to look at, maybe take a deeper dive on, um, and examine as we go through this process.
We've had a lot of discussion about the flatness of school-aged children over the years, the school attendance, and so if I look at, looking at, uh, this demographic and income profile where it talks about population by age, that pretty much, uh, pretty much mirrors what I've heard as far as.
And that, um, it, to be honest, that's true for a lot of the upstate, um, it's, it's sort of that pattern, um, and we can, I'm, I'll look at that more in detail as we get, because I hadn't, I haven't truly fleshed out population, populations, uh, there's a lot of rabbit holes in population, so I kinda get that a little.
It looks to me like the population is aging.
It is, um, and so, and there's several factors, one, you have a lot more retirees moving to the region, not, Oconee certainly, but the whole region, um, even really South Carolina, honestly, is aging to a certain extent, because a lot of seniors are moving here, um, in retirement, you do have just a general trend nationwide of less children, less people, um, people having less children, less people having children, um, you know, it's been part of the narrative on a national scale lately too, so you see that in South Carolina as well. The challenge becomes how do you attract families to bring in jobs, um, and that's, everybody has that same challenge, there's no silver bullet for that, um, I do think that, you know, I think, you know, one thing you identified was kinda downtown development and things like that, I think you can look at your three major towns and say, hey, they're doing good things, and, you know, that's probably gonna help make it more attractive for people to locate here. Obviously, from an economic development standpoint, there's a lot of announcements in the region, um, and Oconee County as well, um, one of the things you'll see in there is, last five years, you're pretty much at the same pace for economic announcements for invest, capital investment and jobs creation, um, it's about 40% of, 47, five-year, it's about 47% of what the last 10-year, the previous 10 years was, so it's, it's on the same pace that it was, um, it's pretty healthy, and then as a region, we have, um, a lot of growth, e- e- just the three county, the work league region, the three county Anderson, Oconee, Pickens is, um, I think there's 1.15 billion dollars in investment in the last five years. You guys had like 300, 300 million of that, so, um, there's a lot that goes into how you attract those young families, or your families and get them to stay here, um, housing obviously is another part of that, and we talked some about that, you know, having a place for families to live that's affordable is always a challenge these days.
See, average home value, median home value, 192.8 for median and 322.2 from average.
Yeah, so it is, yeah, and actually in this, um, the other section, when I look at some of the housing highlights, I think I speak to it here. Uh, no, it was in one of the tables. Yeah, median value of homes increased 30% and rent increased 25% between 2016 and 2023. Um, you know, that, that shows there's a fair amount of increase there. There's not a lot of housing growth either, that is a huge problem in South Carolina as a whole, not just here, um, it's, there was a lag pretty much from the bubble, you know, for the next 10 plus years, and so we didn't have a lot of growth, and that's shown in one of the tables, um, housing growth between 2010 and 2020 was, in Oconee County, was 1.8%, so you had a 2%, so you only had a 6% increase in population during that period, which doesn't seem like it's that much, but at the same time, you had a less than 2% increase in housing. That, you know, and the vacancy rate went down because of that as well, so, you know, you see those things, that's a challenge everywhere, you started to see housing ramp up in a lot of places, especially the last five years, you're seeing that ramp up in some of these numbers, um, as they're trying to play catch-up, but that plays into the fact that housing's not affordable, because there's not a lot of supply, it's a simple supply and demand issue, once you get more supply, you know, demand decreases and price comes down a little bit, but that's a challenge for everybody as you do that, so, um, that's the kinda thing, I, I know y'all identified, like, trying, how to take advantage of opportunity zones to bring more housing in, um, you know, there's other ways you can look at it, I will say, I had a question from the, um, state HUD director the other day about, give me some examples of good opportunity zone housing projects, I'm like, man, I don't have many, because there aren't many, he said, there really aren't many statewide, it hasn't impacted housing the way they had hoped, they don't have a lot of success stories there, um, but there are other ways you can look at it and how you kind of attract it as a community, but that's, you know, that would be part and parcel of how do you get younger families, and you gotta find ways that you can get them affordable housing in communities that they wanna be in, kinda thing, so. This is where rabbit holes exist everywhere, and there goes all over the place, one little thread gets you a little piece of every element, so. And really, I, you know, the extent to our conversation really depends on you guys, how much you wanna talk about it, I don't wanna overwhelm you, it's a five-year review, as I said, when you're talking, talking about a plan that looked 20 years out, five years is a pretty short time period, so it's really a look in and try to evaluate, but there are trends out there that we can get into and look at and see how they're impacted, you know, what's impacted them, maybe if we wanna tweak some of the goals and strategies from that, so, as we go along, so, I think is, you know, for the next time, I, I think I'll maybe get James to send you guys an email, so y'all can start shooting those questions to me, specific things you find out of that, and so we can start maybe taking a deeper dive, answering some of those questions for you as we go.
Anybody have any questions for?
I can't keep it all secret.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Okay, now we come to the discussion regarding the Oconee County Code of Ordinances, chapter 26-2, changes proposed. Uh, again, we'll have a public comment, and we've already talked about the timer, everybody, I think pretty much everybody here I've seen before, so y'all know the timing routine, Make sure when you come up, state your name for the record, and that'll be it. Mrs. Lucretia Morgan.
All right, for the record, my name is Lucretia Morgan, I'm here again to voice my opposition to the proposed changes to Oconee County Code of Ordinances, chapter 26-2 regarding private roads. At the last couple of meetings- At the last couple of meetings, there's been a lot of talk about misleading information coming into the public. But let's be honest, it's not just the public. There has been inaccurate and misleading statements made from some members of the commission as well. It has been repeated more than once that there are many private roads or drives in the county without a 50-foot right-of-way, citing several Lake Sow divisions as examples, Beacon Shores, Harbor Oaks, Waterford Point, Waterside Crossing, The Summit, and South Oak Point. I looked into each of these. All but one are private drives serving 10 homes or less. Only one has a private road serving 20 homes. These are located on peninsulas, not acting as throughways or bottlenecks between public streets. Additionally, their right-of-ways range from 30 to 40 feet, not 20 as proposed. Utility access was mentioned at the last meeting, but since it came after, up after public comments, and we're not allowed to respond during commission discussion, I didn't get the chance to address it then. So I'd like to do it now. Someone on the commission commented that no developer would be dumb enough to build a subdivision without securing utility access. That's simply not true. In fact, this happened twice near my home. I won't name names, but a member of this very commission had to ask their neighbor, Jimmy Ratliff, for access to get power to his personal property. The developer hadn't secured power access ahead of time, and the realtor missed it too. Jimmy could have said no, and without that access, solar might have been his only option, but he agreed to help. Another example is the development on my road where my subdivision granted Duke an easement to provide power to two lots for another subdivision. The lots had already been purchased, but no one realized access hadn't been granted until they started to build. Once again, this happened because the developer failed to secure access in advance, and he sold the lots. So yes, developers do make mistakes, and when they do, it's the neighbors, the landowners, and the community left to clean up the mess. Changing this ordinance is only going to lead to more of that down the road. To date, no hard facts or data have been presented to justify this change. Where is the actual evidence that there's a problem that needs solving? Is there, if this were an issue, why isn't anyone gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for a variance? Only two individuals have come forward in support, one citizen and one developer. The so-called examples presented in previous meetings have turned out to be invalid or misleading. So I ask this commission, where are the real examples? Where is the data? What specific problem is this change intended to solve? The only thing we've heard is government overreach, and we also previously heard Farmer Joe dividing his family property. Why would we alter a regulation that affects long-term land use across the county without clear substantiated reasoning? Who benefits and at what cost? Let's not forget your legal option, obligation under Section 32 of the Oconee County Code. It states, "It is the function and duty of the County Planning Commission to undertake a continuing planning program for the physical, social, and economic growth, development, and redevelopment of the county. The plans and programs must be designed to promote public health, safety, morals, convenience, prosperity, or the general welfare as well, so as the efficiency and economy of the county." So I ask again, how does this change promote public safety and welfare? How does it ensure efficient and economic development for all residents, not just developers? Has there been any studies to support this change? Have you considered how these changes might burden current residents or shift infrastructure responsibility onto taxpayers? Transparency and thoughtful planning are your responsibilities. Let's be clear, a private road serving 11 homes, or 11 or more homes, is not for someone wanting to divide land for their kids or grandkids. It is for developers. And that is, who will benefit from these changes, not everyday residents. Vague stories and unverified examples don't meet that standard. The people of Oconee County deserve better. We deserve the real facts, honest reasoning, and full transparency. And thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. The next one is Michael Grant.
Good evening. My name is Michael Grant. I am in strong opposition to any reduction in the 50-foot right-of-way for private drives or roads. A change of this magnitude with wide-ranging implications for the entire county should not be decided without full public input. Such a significant decision should warrant a countywide referendum to ensure transparency, fairness, and that all the voices of all residents are heard. Thank you.
Mr. Grant. Serena Brown Richardson.
Hello, I'm Serena Brown Richardson. I'd like to thank you for your service to our county and also appreciate the extra time you allowed me to speak at the last meeting. I'll be shorter this time. I urge you to listen to the citizens of Oconee, conduct a survey. I believe the majority would support opposition as those who have emailed you and spoken before you. My petition of 52 signatures, another petition of approximately 50 signatures, 11 emails, 11 speakers, and last meeting, a standing room of property owners and citizens that oppose changing a nearly 20-year, very necessary ordinance. Only one landowner who resides in another county, and I could be a developer, not quite sure, and one landowner agreed with this change so far, that's actually came to you guys and said, hey, yeah, we agree. I just ask you, I asked this to be shown. Luther Land Road was mentioned about a fire there and, you know, you probably can't see it there, but if you go and you Google and look, I meant, there are roads off of roads off of roads. And, um, you know, just ask you to review all the data that citizens have shared with you. And there were pictures that Linda Lovely sent in reference to this fire. And it is in the backup material, if y'all want to turn and look at that. I mean, you can see the size of that equipment. And there, the transportation, fire, and emergency vehicles need this right-of-way to operate safely. Surrounding counties, Pickers, Pickens, Anderson, Greenville have this 50-foot right-of-way. No one besides Arrowhead in April of 2022, three years ago, has applied to the BZA needing this variance. That indicates this reduction isn't an inherent need at all. No property owners exist who need such a variance, or we would have them speaking up here at every single meeting. I don't quite understand why I'm questioned on the validity of my 452 signatures with property addresses my petitions I sent. But please let me know how to submit a valid petition. I have emailed a copy of my petition so you guys can look at it. Mine clearly explained what it was for, and yes, the majority of those I collected were door-to-door or face-to-face. And unfortunately, this time, I'm not going to have that opportunity with my mother being sick. So they are valid. So please listen to those 452 people. So if y'all will let me know about that, I guess if y'all have to talk privately about my petition and let me know, because I already have 25 signatures. And I just appreciate your time and would really wish you'd listen to your county. There is a way if someone needs to divide that for their, for their family and not just open it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Tom Markovich.
Thank you. I sent a little drawing to, uh, to James earlier today, just to kind of pick out what was described originally when this whole discussion started. And sometimes there's a very limited right-of-way that's between two pieces of property. And just to give you an idea, let's just say this property right here and this property right here are not a part of this property back there. And so somebody's got a 30-foot right-of-way to get back to this property back here, and then they decide they want to subdivide it. Now, I've been working with this county since 1996, 1997, on roads and development. And, uh, you go back to, I can go all the way back to 8214. That was our first subdivision and, or primarily our first subdivision and road ordinance here in Oconee County. And it was the law for many years. You cannot separate roads and subdivision of land because it's, the two just go hand in hand. And it's always been that way. And there was never any question about, in fact, to the point that in 1997, uh, the council here was very concerned about a bill that was going through the House at that time, state legislation that was gonna, if they tried to take a private road and make you basically regulate a private road, it was going to be considered a takings. And so the county was so upset over it because they thought they were going to have to start paying out all this money to acquire the land for these public right-of-ways. And so, um, anyway, the, the legislation did not pass at that time. But nonetheless, there's always been, the subdivision of property and access to it has always been a fundamental thing here in, in, uh, across the state. I don't see how we start now deciding that private roads aren't actually private, that public has the ability to regulate them. I realize that we've been operating under this for 20 years. I regret that, the only reason it ever came about was to settle a lawsuit, and I was involved in that lawsuit. And I hate that this thing ever got to this point, to be honest. But it is what it is at this point in time. And I just truly believe that there's a whole lot of people who already have property that was subdivided. If they'd have known that they were going to need 50 feet to have, maybe they would have left 50 feet, but they didn't. Now, it's interesting because we've gone back and we've grandfathered a whole bunch of private roads that were built prior to 2008, and they're grandfathered in just exactly the way they are. Evidently, they must be safe, or we wouldn't have approved that. So, I mean, this idea that all of a sudden we have this new correlation that if a road doesn't meet the county standard, it's not safe, well, I ain't buying that argument at all. And so I just think there's a lot of property out there that people are, it's basically being taken by, by regulation. It is unquestionably, unquestionably a takings in my mind. And so I just really think we have to rethink this whole process. I do believe that there has to be safe access. And so I think there's mechanisms on which we can achieve safe access. But anyway, that's all I got right now.
Thank you, Mr. Markovich. Mr. John Richardson.
My name is John Richardson. Thank you for your service and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Last meeting, I specifically said I was very opposed to the change you're trying to make, and that felt like there was a definite conflict of interest with some of the people on the board and the people that are driving this change. But enough of that. I want to talk about another issue to me that this change may bring about. One is, you gotta, you gotta agree that making this change reduces the standard of the road, some of the roads in the county, and it also increases the population density off of some of these roads. I wonder if the Planning Commission is truly coordinating and doing the planning that needs to be done with one of their biggest taxpayers and assets in the county, Duke Energy's Oconee Nuclear Station. Citing a listing of nuclear power plants must factor in several things. 10 CFR Part 100 reactor site criteria requires that physical characteristics unique to the proposed site that could pose a significant impediment to the development of emergency plants be identified, which they were. It also requires that applicants identify physical characteristics unique to the proposed site, such as egress limitations from the area surrounding the site that could pose a significant impediment to the development of emergency plants. It also requires that applicants submit evacuation time estimates, and that they update those over time. I think Duke is on a five-year timeframe for that. In preparing an evacuation time estimate, there are several things that have to be looked at and considered, particularly in addition to the analysis of field survey of key routes within the emergency planning zone should be performed, check the accuracy of the mapping. Field surveys should validate the mapping and provide roadway characteristics and information not typically included on maps, such as number of lanes, pavement width, roadway constraints, shoulder type and width, bridge locations and width, et cetera, all the things that can affect evacuation in an emergency. New Reg CR 4831 indicates that the planning process should be a cooperative effort between applicant, which would be Duke, and state and local agencies. And so I wonder if that's really happening with this particular change. New Reg CR 4831 also indicates the evacuation time estimate is only as good as the input data used in the analysis. Changes in the two key determinants of evacuation time, population and roadway capacity, must be regularly monitored and updated. Monitoring of population growth over time is critical. The changes you're proposing have an effect, in my mind, on capacity and increasing the population density in certain areas, particularly the area that's trying to drive this issue for, which is the Arrowhead Peninsula. Now, Duke periodically updates the evacuation time estimate like they're required to. It's usually not a big deal, but I would say it's always a big deal during initial licensing. They've already gone through what we call license renewal and got an additional 20 years on each of the units from the original 40-year license. They're currently going through what we call subsequent license renewal to get another, get another 20 years added to the license. It would be a shame to see somebody who has standing request or petition a hearing on their subsequent license renewal applications based on the changes that this commission is, is making. And I'm thus not somebody that went and looked at a whole bunch of regulations through Google. I lived this process. I was required to get the license for a nuclear power plant in Mississippi and do all the emergency planning and evacuation time estimates for that plant. So I know a little bit about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Perry Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Perry Smith. I am a District Two property owner. Before I became involved in politics, I had heard of the Planning Commission. I had thought, not knowing what it was, that this, this was something that was responsible for shaping a better future for our communities. What I've come to realize, however, is that in the past, commissions made decisions that have led to a loss of individual freedoms, mainly for property owners. Look at what we have lost over the past 20 years in the name of zoning. Now, as the new conservative majority, responsibility rests on your shoulders. You have the opportunity to correct the course or continue down a path that restricts our rights. This is your moment to be remembered either for standing up for what's right or for allowing further erosion of our individual freedoms. So I ask you, what will you choose for future landowners? What legacy will you leave for my children and future landowners for generations to come? Look at the impact previous commissioners have had on the majority of property owners in Oconee County. Now is the time to make it right. For those of us for those of us who value and want to preserve our property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
We have some, we have two one-hour comments this evening. They're the very last part of your document material. I will scroll to those real quick. Uh, the first, I'm opposed to any reduction in right of ways for private drives and roads. That's from Mr. Thomas. And the second, I'm opposed to any reduction in the right of way for private drives and roads. And that's from Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, close public comments. And now we come to discussion. Who wants to go first? Tracey?
I'd like to invite our DOT representative to come talk before we start our discussion. Does that make sense?
You want to make a motion? Bring him up?
Make a motion to bring Mr. Smith up?
Second. All in favor?
Good evening, Councils. Um, my name is Joel Smith. I am the District Maintenance Engineer for the South Carolina Department of Transportation in District Three. Um, that is Oconee, Pickens, Greenville, and Spartanburg Counties. Um, I'll just give you kind of a brief rundown of, of the state's perspective, kind of on right of way, um, roads as it relates to the conversation this evening. And I'll just, I'll open it up for y'all to answer or ask questions of me. So, um, first of all, I'll, uh, agree a hundred percent with your, your county attorney, I believe it was, as it relates to the, the distinction between private and public roads. Um, you know, whether it's state maintained, county maintained, city maintained, um, the, the biggest, the biggest difference is that the ownership and the maintenance in perpetuity of a public road is, is that of, of that municipality. Um, for private roads, it is those private citizens that either collectively through an HOA or, or just some kind of a handshake agreement, uh, own and maintain that roadway. It doesn't necessarily have to be gated. Um, it can be a open, openly accessible private road. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's public. So, um, state law actually refers to the fact that private ownership for vehicular traffic is for the owner and those having expressed or implied permission from the owner. That is the state's, that is the state law definition of a private road versus a public road. And so again, it doesn't have to be gated. Um, it just means that you either have permission to be there or not. So, um, as it relates to roadways themselves, we have a roadway design guide um, that kind of discusses widths of travel lane, widths of roadway infrastructure, sidewalks, ditches, uh, area for utilities, things of that nature. So, um, as it relates to local roads or county roads, um, our guidelines, uh, don't actually, don't actually explicitly state a defined width. Um, it is, it is noted in our design manuals, um, based on the project itself. So for some roads, you may need a hundred-foot right of way. For some roads, you may need a sixty-five-foot right of way. It really all just depends on a lot of variables, the average daily traffic on the road, the type of road it's gonna be, whether it's urban, whether it's a highway system, things of that nature. So the state doesn't have a defined, uh, minimum or maximum right of way. It really depends on the, the use and need of the road. Um, so that comes from our highway design manual. The, the other thing I'll mention is that as it relates to access, which I think has a little bit more of a, um, a talking, discussing, talking point here with what y'all are trying to, to decide, is our access and roadside's manual, which is kind of like our permitting process. So whether the county came to us and wanted to get an encroachment to access a state road, whether a private developer wanted to, to build a neighborhood, um, you know, kind of what we all kind of envision, a hundred homes here and there. Um, or whether, uh, a private citizen that owns a hundred-acre track wants to subdivide it uh, to six or seven family members. They would all have to come to the state to get an encroachment permit for access. So I think that's kind of where those widths come into play from my perspective, uh, from a state's perspective. So, um, those guidelines can be found in our arms manual. Uh, they start out with, again, the number of trips, which I can't, which is pretty much the most important thing uh, when it comes to designing roadways. So if you've got, uh, two or three residential homes, you're only talking about three or four trips a day. Um, you know, it's gonna have minimum standards when it comes to that access point or that drive or that private road, whatever you want to call it. Once you start in, increasing those trips, you start adding homes, fifteen homes, twenty homes, those thresholds and those minimum design standards start to increase. So that's where all that kind of comes into play. For instance, um, minimum widths on a access point to the state road system, uh, is sixteen foot wide. Um, that would be edge of pavement to edge of pavement. Then you include five feet either side for the radiuses associated with that access point. So that makes it a twenty-six-foot right, twenty-six-foot wide apron. Well, then you've got to take into account the drainage, the ditches. Then you've got to take into account your utilities, things of that nature. So that, that footprint or that right of way or easement starts to get wider and wider as that use of the property becomes more and more, um, frequent, more and more trips. So. Um, but that's kind of it in a nutshell. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I've got a few.
Sure.
Uh, so your SC D O P manual, actually, Chapter fourteen is what I was reviewing.
Correct.
That's for public roadways, correct?
Yes.
And in that, the bare minimum standard for a group one is how many trips per day?
If you've got it in front of you, you can tell me because I don't have it memorized. I've got it, I've got it pulled up, but.
I think it's five hundred.
Yeah, for a public road.
For a public road.
Correct.
Uh, and in that, you're looking at a nine-foot. Uh, you actually can come up here if you want to.
Oh, I'm okay with that.
So he can actually see this document?
Yeah, I've got it on my phone as well.
Okay, well, you can pull it up there either way.
What, what page, what page are you on?
Actually, I don't have a page number, but it's image fourteen dot three dash A. It's a graph or a Excel.
Dash eight.
A.
Oh.
Is the image. Is it this one? Um, no, actually, it's not that one. It's, that's dealing with clear zones, which is another question to ask.
Okay, yeah, figured fourteen point three dash A, got it.
So group one, the, uh, width of the road?
Yeah, the travel lane width, nine feet.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Uh, shoulder width?
Total width, total, total shoulder width is four feet on either side.
Okay. And clear zone?
Uh, it has a note to look at, number seven.
And actually, when you look at number seven, it's seven feet to your side.
Right.
Um, explain to us what clear zone is.
So clear zone is the area in which if you have a fixed object, so like a bridge abutment, a retaining wall, um, anything that could potentially cause harm to a, a person traveling down the road, um, the clear zone is there to help, uh, facilitate either getting that object out of the clear zone or protecting it with, with guardrail. Um, the clear, it's kind of like a recoverable area. If you've got to like hit the brakes and swerve because a deer runs out in front of you, it's the area that allows a person to safely come to a complete stop.
Okay. Does that clear the zone need to be clear of brush, trees, debris?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
Yeah.
So it can be in that area?
Yeah, it's, it, the clear zone, again, it's more like hard, solid, fixed. Mailboxes don't count. Um, AT&T pedestals don't count.
Rocks count.
Rocks count?
Yes.
Boulders count.
I'll say boulders count. Um, do you have in, in the SCDOT sta, SCDOT standards, anything for private roads?
Only as it relates to the arms manual for like the actual access that we.
Access points.
The access point itself. But once you get beyond the SCDOT's right of way, we have no jurisdiction going off into that private property.
Could you say private roads are covered under the local roads? You know, there's a, there was a chart, it was arterial collector.
Oh, as far as the classifications of roads?
Oh.
I don't, I don't believe so.
But aren't, but the, according to the eight, I think a local road has the ADT count of zero four hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So that's probably a private road.
If you had something like a cliff, like I'll just take the cliffs because everybody knows the cliffs. So if you have the cliff, a cliffs neighborhood, which I believe are private roads, they're gated communities. Um, so they would be considered, uh, of more of a local road from a design perspective. Um, but not necessarily from a, a, I guess, from a legal statute because they are considered private roads because they're not maintained by a municipality or the state.
You seem to know your, I'm sorry, I have one question. You seem to know your state codes pretty well. Do you know the state code for minimum road width?
No, not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Do you?
Yes.
What is it?
Sixteen foot.
I think you mentioned sixteen feet.
So that's for, yeah, that's access points. Min, minimum, minimum width of an access point onto a state road is sixteen feet wide.
So it's actually Section fifty-seven dash seventeen dash five-ten. It's also fifty-seven dash five dash three-thirty, if you wanted to pull that up. Are you good with state, pull up state code?
Let's see how fast we can Google. What'd you say, fifteen?
Fifty-seven dash seventeen dash five-one-zero, SC code.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if the state can't regulate a private road, why should the county regulate a private road?
So, in my experience, where we have issues with private roads, and I'll give you a perfect example. Over in Greenville County, we had a recent situation where there were about twenty-ish property owners, twenty separate parcels that accessed a private road that came into, uh, South Carolina Highway, Highway two eighty-eight, so near the Salida River.
Yeah.
Um, it was a older dirt gravel private road that had an access to the state road. Only two or three homes had actually been built. The rest of the properties had been bought and they were owned by people from New Jersey and Ohio and Florida and just all over the place. Um, and we had continued issues with that road washing out into Highway two eighty-eight. It caused a couple of wrecks. Um, it just, it, we kept having to go out with our maintenance crews and clean our ditches, clean our pipes because no one would maintain that private road. Uh, we had to send twenty-plus certified letters to every single one of those property owners and say, basically, y'all need to get together to do something because if, if it, every, every time we have to go out here and pay tax, spend taxpayers' dollars to go clean up our road because of your negligence of your private road, um, we are going to be forced to do what's called a thirty-twenty-five A form, which basically puts a lien on all those properties. Um, and we would then collectively file, you know, whether it costs us ten thousand dollars to go clean out the road or five thousand dollars to clean out the ditch. It puts a lien on all those properties and it's, it's very unfortunate. We don't like to do that. We typically try to, you know, make contact with the property owners personally or knock on doors or whatever. It was a unique situation being that all those properties were owned by different people and yada, yada, yada. But what it does is, sorry, I'll, I'll land the plane. Um, what it does is it creates an issue to where no one takes ownership and it makes it very, very difficult for us as a municipality or y'all as a county or, or whoever that, that maintains the, the road and the right of way that they, the property, the private road joins to, to be able to get any kind of resolution on the negative impacts. So. And, and that's one example, but it happens in Pickens County. It's happened here in Oconee County. We've had to write letters. I mean, so it does create, uh, potential safety issues, um, if it's a situation where there is just zero maintenance responsibility associated with the, with the private road.
So how, how common is that? How many, how many incidents per year would you say?
I would say that we, we probably.
Common or uncommon?
It's common. It's common, yeah. It, it's probably a couple of times a month where we have to a, address those types of issues.
And what type of issues are you addressing? Is it actually material getting in your roadway or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, it would be like their, their gravel washing down or.
So stormwater runoff?
It's mo, it is mostly related to, uh, stormwater. Yes, correct.
And wouldn't you say that that's the, I mean, I think you've already said it, that it's the responsibility of the group of people who are, were living off that private road?
That's correct, it is.
That they should be maintaining it. There's most likely, just like there is in Oconee County, requirements for them to maintain that road and they're neglecting those requirements.
That would be my assumption, yes. It, uh, my assumption based on the fact that, you know, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I'm making an assumption as well, but I mean, it seems reasonable to make that assumption in my mind.
Yeah.
Was there an association, like an HOA or something?
No, there wasn't.
There wasn't. So it was just this loose group of homes, not necessarily connected by.
And that's typically where. Yes, ma'am, that's typically where we run into it. If there's an HOA, it's usually a little easier to deal with because there's usually a point of contact and, you know, there's some.
The responsibility for the road maintenance, regardless, HOA or private owners, is the same, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it's just usually easier to, to address or get the situation addressed if there is an HOA with a point of contact and there's a, you know, there's funds that they're collecting to be able to attack that kind of stuff.
So in those situations, I'm sorry, which brings me to my follow-up question. So, a county ordinance that requires a right of way on either side of a given road, a private road, how does that help you guys? Does that help you guys in this matter or not?
It, it would in theory because it, it defines limits. It defines the responsibilities. It defines an area for drainage, an area for a road width. It, I'll say it this way. Private roads that have no right of way, no, or, or easement for that matter, and it's literally just a property line splitting law, uh, splitting parcels all the way down it and they just, there is just a, a line on a map, so to speak. Those are the situations where it is typically harder to get those safety issues addressed whereas if it is a defined easement or a defined, uh, right of way.
So what makes a defined right of way, uh, be maintained to a higher extent or level than one that is not defined?
Again, it provides that footprint.
Yeah, even if you have the footprint, would you agree if it's not being maintained that those ditches will fill up?
Yeah, oh, correct. Yeah, absolutely.
So, in that sense, would the width of the road or the right of way benefit a road that's not maintained?
So in my experience, we've had more issues with the no right of way or no easement than we have had with situations where we've had a defined, uh, easement or right of way.
But still, that didn't answer my question. Uh, if the road's not being maintained?
If the road's not being maintained, then i, it's an issue, period.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
With your time. Are there any motions on the floor? Are there any to be on the floor?
I make a a motion that any changes we. that any changes we do in chapter twenty-nine.
Is there a motion for any changes other than what we already did last round?
There's not a motion yet, but what I'm trying to do first, before we get into that, is make a motion that any changes we do in twenty-nine be held.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, twenty-six be held until we go into the subdivision ordinance in chapter thirty-two. And then it be submitted to council then, is a big beautiful package.
So we have a motion that any changes in section twenty-six, including-
That was a motion, yes.
So we have, we have a motion that any changes in section twenty-six, including the ones already listed here and read, uh, do not go to council until we also have changes to chapter thirty-two that complement them.
Right.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Um, yeah, um. I, I, I like the idea of looking at the subdivision regs and seeing how that might parlay with the, the twenty-six point two. I do think that if there's um, any changes, because it can affect so many properties that we sent out a letter, get the people's opinion, just like we did with the scenic highway situation, and the renaming the street, the neighbor, the street and the neighborhood situation. I'd add that as a friendly amendment to your amendment.
Send a letter to who?
People on private ride, people on private roads. I think you can work with GIS and figure that out. Do you think, James?
We can make that happen if you, um-
Okay.
That's probably not a faster, that's probably-
It won't be fast, but this is not a time-sensitive issue, so I think we're good. There's no hurry here.
We can, we can-
I think you could take, take the list from roads and bridges, what they, they work on, and then work on-
We can give Nick a really great-
Yeah, you can do it.
What's the, um, just- Hold on, we got an amendment on the floor. Is anyone gonna second that?
I'll second that.
Well, could I ask a quick question? What, what kinda turnaround time are you talking about? Do you have an idea?
Uh, so our GIS manager's on vacation the rest of this week, so we can give it to him next week, and probably get a week to put that together, probably. Um, just to double-check and validate all of the private, so that's a lot, there's a lot of private roads.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Kyle probably has a better idea of how many, just how many there are. I, I think we could get it together in a week, probably, the list. And then just validate it off of the actual addresses on there, and I think we can pull it out, like, two weeks, maybe?
Two weeks.
Seriously? I think so. Okay. Um-
Is that long or short, you think?
Well, we don't know-
Way too short.
The way too short.
Well, we don't know what we're putting in that letter yet, do we?
Is that, that's my question. What are we putting in the letter?
Just getting an address list. I was talking about-
Okay. Uh, so what are we gonna?
Is your intention to remove right-of-ways on private roads? Then I would say that's a question. How do you feel if you didn't have a right-of-way? Do you like your right-of-way? Do you find your right-of-way to be a positive? Do you like how, you know, we could work on the questions. That's the easy part of the thing.
Are we removing their right-of-way, or removing the county requirement?
Removing the county requirement for-
They, they have the choice to remove the right-of-way, not the county. It's their right-of-way, it's not the county's.
You're moving the requirement on a private road. Is that what you're doing? So I would say, let's consult the people and see what they think. Why make this decision for them?
Well, it, it's asking them, do they want that requirement removed? Uh, in other words, it's-
People have been coming to the county and asking for help with their roads and giving over right-of-ways since the seventies. I mean, if there's a long history of doing that, county can't help people with their roads unless they give it right-of-way, because the county would be trespassing. So there's a give and a take. There's definitely positives to right-of-ways. And I just think just taking them away, and this is a very all-encompassing situation affecting thousands of people, we need to hear from the people in this one.
I think you're misunderstanding uh, the direction we're heading in. We're not taking any right-of-way away from the property owners. That is their right-of-way. Uh, this is for future developments.
Exactly.
Giving them the same option that these, a lot of these individuals on these private roads had, for them to decide themselves the lay of the road.
So your future homeowners will decide if they wanna right-of-way or not?
Well, no. They will decide how the easement, ingress and egress, what it will look like. If they want a hundred foot to either side, they can have a hundred foot to either side. If they want twenty foot to either side, they can have twenty foot to either side.
I think that's why you need a standard, because what if you want somebody with one foot, and you want somebody with ten feet, and then that guy wants twenty? You're gonna have different sizes all across your road? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's not what happens. It's an agreement between the private property owners. This is, this is no different than any other contractual agreement between private parties. That's exactly what it is. Them coming to terms on how they're going to divide their property up, so that other property owners, or those property owners can have to be able to travel to and from, ingress and egress.
But you're still, you're establishing a right-of-way for a parcel at a time. Is that what you're doing?
If they so desire.
This fifty-foot, fifty-acre parcel goes into five-ten acre parcels, this ten acre can decide their right-of-way or easement. This one, this one, and this one.
That, that's why it's a private road, and that's what's been happening in the county for a long time.
What do you think about that, Mr. Smith? Is, can you comment on a situation like that? I don't know, that sounds crazy. Come on up.
He thought he was safe.
Make sure I play one of the rules, sorry. Okay, so, repeat the question?
Well, I think if I'm understanding what Mr. Haney's saying, say you've got a fifty-acre parcel, five landowners, ten acres each, and each parcel wants a different size right-of-way. You ever seen anything like that, or?
Unfortunately, yes. Um, so again, from my perspective, it's what are, what are we allowing at the access point to the public roadway? Whether, and again, I care about state roads, but if it's a county road, I feel like it should be very similar. Just my opinion. But if you're talking about allowing a varied right-of-way, or a varied easement between properties as it leaves the state's road, or as it leaves the county's road, varied right-of-ways become somewhat problematic. Um, I'll give another example. We've got a bridge that we're replacing over in Greenville right now, that I were, just reviewed the, the plans for. And because we are having to acquire right-of, we're having to acquire additional right-of-way to move the bridge and, and redesign it and everything. The designers have shown for fifty feet, we've got thirty-seven and a half feet of right-of-way. And then for five more feet, we've got seventy feet of right-of-way. And then it comes back in again to fifty feet, and then it goes back out again, and it ju- it just kinda, it looks like a puzzle piece. That makes it very, again, from a state's perspective, it makes it very difficult from not only a surveying standpoint, you're gonna have a surveyor cuss ya when he has to go lay out that new right-of-way. It also creates issues when it comes to liability, um. The drainage design, if, if a utility company, whether it's Blue Ridge, or Duke, or AT&T, or whoever, when they go to want to run as straight of a line as possible, they're gonna be in the right-of-way, then they're gonna be out of the right-of-way, then they're gonna be back in the right-of-way, then they're, so gen- again, generally speaking, varied right-of-way creates more issues than a uniform right-of-way. So does that answer your question?
Yep, seems totally logical to me.
Okay.
So, let me ask you this.
Sure.
Utilities is a good example.
Okay.
You're familiar with this area?
Yes.
So would you stay, or would you uh, claim that the utilities stay within the state right-of-way? Or do they veer off onto their own right-of-way?
They, yeah, they, they can veer off and get their own easements or permissions, or-
So, so utilities is not a factor. So let's go back to the, the problem that you have there. Is that a public road?
The scenario we're talking about?
Yes.
Not, I mean, as far as for this talking point, no, y'all are discussing private roads.
No, about the bridge.
Oh, yeah, that's a public-
So it's a public road.
Right.
And how are you acquiring that additional right-of-way?
Uh, right-of-way acquisitions, so we, we physically go speak to that property owner and pay him a, you know-
So you compensate them?
Correct.
Okay. And why do you do that?
We're required to by state law.
What portion of state law?
I don't know the, the state law, but I know that we, we, while we do have um, condemnation ability, we still have to pay that person fair and reasonable, you know.
James, can you bring up Article One, Section thirteen of the Declaration of Rights for South Carolina? Go to Section thirteen. Would you mind reading Section thirteen for us?
Taking private property economic development remedy of blight. A, except as otherwise provided in this constitution, private property shall not be taken for private use without the consent of the owner, nor for public use without just compensation being first made for the property. Private property must not be condemned by eminent domain for any purpose or benefit, including but not limited to the purpose or benefit of economic development, unless the condemnation is for the public use. B, for the limited purpose of the remedy of blight, the General Assembly may provide by law that private property constituting a danger to the safety and health of the community by reason of lack of ventilation, light, and sanitary facilities dilapidated, dilatoryous.
Dilatoryous.
There you go. Land use or any combination of these factors may be condemned by eminent domain without the consent of the owner and put into a public use or private use, if just compensation is first made for the property.
All right. So that's why we do that.
Correct.
And uh, that's part of our constitutional rights, and that's what separates private property from public property. And I think the key thing in there is that private property shall not be taken for private use without consent of the owner.
Nor for public use.
Nor for public use without compensation.
Correct.
Right. So, we'll get to that here in a little bit, but I surely appreciate your time.
Sure.
So we have-
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, an amendment to the first motion. The amendment is to send out letters to, I'm, I'm gonna summarize.
Just real quick, I'd like to ask Mr. Haney a question, uh, and that is that, uh, for um, the dis- discussion you wanna have on developments.
Yes, sir.
Would that impact the questions that we would ask for the private roads, for those people on private roads?
Where I'm going is private roads are just that, it's private roads. But then planned developments, planned developments, because basically you got two, two types of developments that are happening in the county. Those that are not planned, which are family members selling off property, and those that are planned, a developer coming in and dividing up fifty acres. Planned developments, and we actually got a, a uh, a call-out for planned developments, if I'm not mistaken, in our zone. Those fall under a totally different category, and that's where cul-de-sac widths come into play, utility easements, uh, stormwater management for the site comes into play. All of that comes into play there, because it's more restrictive, because you have people coming in into that development that assumes, because most planned developments are planned and have all those things in place, uh, assume those things are in place, so we gotta make sure they're in place. The problem is, in chapter, uh, or in section twenty-six, there's things in there that needs to be pulled out and pushed over into the subdivision ordinance, because they pertain strictly to the subdivision ordinance. Uh, and that's, what has happened is that, I hate to say it this way, but the people that had written up this ordinance had wrote it in a way as to not taking consideration to the other type of subdivided land in the county. The gravel road that runs five miles in, that splits off to other personal properties. They did not take into consideration for those type of developments. Uh, instead, they wrote it as if it's a subdivision, and that's what I'm trying to do, is pull those things out of the chapter twenty-six and say, private roads are private roads. Now, a subdivision, a planned subdivision is something totally different, and it should be held to different standards. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Root had alluded to the ability for us to do that. And uh, that's where I'm going with this. I really want to have, give the private property owners the ability to do as they wish with their private roads. The family, the ability to say, I don't need a fifty-foot right-of-way for utilities. That's where I'm going. But anyhow, did that answer your question?
Somewhat. So, um, my question, once again, would be, is changes to chapter, or section thirty-two would change some of the definitions, or some of the regulations in chapter, or section twenty-six, such that the questions that would be sent out, once we know who lives on private roads, and we're gonna survey them, how would it, would it impact the questions that we write? Do we have to wait for those changes to be made in section thirty-two?
James, you probably know this better than I, for us, the subdivision development. It's got its own road standards within it, correct? The reference back-
It references back to chapter twenty-six.
To the public road section of chapter twenty-six, and we're not modifying the public road section of chapter twenty-six.
Okay.
We're only modifying the private road standards of, of chapter twenty-six.
All right. And that was my question. Thank you.
Okay. So now, did that answer your question?
It did.
Yeah, quick.
So why do we have to send letters to people on private roads whose property we've taken via ordinances that are contrary to section thirteen in the state?
Why are we?
Why would we have to? Why can't we make that decision?
Couldn't make the decision on a street name, or we couldn't make a decision on a scenic highway. Why not, in the spirit of consistency, do the same? You know, I'm thinking about this section thirteen that you pointed out. I guess, what if somebody on that private property, do you think they might like mailboxes?
They may not let, let mailboxes be done.
They might, but they might. Do you think they might have children that might be schoolbuses?
And that would be something that the private landowners decide themselves.
Because that, an argument can be made that schoolbuses, mail, emergency services is just compensation.
And we'll get into that here in a minute. So the motion is, my question is, if we send these letters out, and we're only dealing with private roads that's not in this, in, are we only dealing with private roads that's not in the subdivision? Because the ones that's in the subdivision are not gonna fall under the same classification.
It's a private road, everyone. It's a private road.
I, I don't think so, because we're not, we're not affecting the ones that's in the subdivision. They fall under-
It'd be nice to have their opinion.
But their opinions are not dealing with the private roads that are outside of subdivisions. I mean, their, their opinions are based on being inside of the subdivision.
So you wouldn't mail them to Kiwi Key?
No, I would not, because they're in the subdivision. And they fall under the subdivision ordinance.
They are on a private road with an opinion. I think whether they're in a subdivision or not, what does that matter? I don't know.
Well, I think it matters a lot, because people in a subdivision is gonna have a different view on uh, what private roads are versus people that live out in the country.
Well, it's here, Eric, it's here at all. I mean, there's one here at all, just that they give-
Cause it doesn't pertain to them, what we're talking about.
But it might, if they said, all of a sudden, that fifty acre- But it might, if they said, all of a sudden, that fifty acre person could become a neighbor, they could become a Kiwi Key.
I want to amend your amendment to only include private roads that are outside of subdivisions.
Do you have a second on that motion? Amendment to the amendment?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Discussion on the amendment to the amendment, to the motion.
If that fifty acres becomes a Kiwi Key, then it falls under a, a different regulation. It falls under the subdivision regulation, which is different than a private road.
But the private road is defined as eleven plus, right? Eleven plus dwellings, fifty-foot right of way. But to your point, the subdivision ray conflict, or concludes the private road definition?
Correct.
So do you think it makes better sense to work with the subdivisions? Do that change, and then do a letter?
No, I think we need to, uh, we're dealing with private roads first. Then we're gonna look at subdivision regs and make sure that everything's in there, that needs to be in there, and that we've not diluted the restrictions on subdivisions so that uh, they do not protect those in, those unknown individuals. So that they do protect them, those unknown individuals that buy property into subdivision. Subdivision should have uh, a more extensive layout of the roadway, the utilities, stormwater management. All of that should be more extensively laid out than what you would get in a rural area.
Are you opposed to sending a letter?
I'm opposed to muddying the water with individuals that are in a subdivision, because by nature, they're going to uh, not understand the gist of what we're dealing with, with private roads in the uh, rural area that's not in the subdivision. And therefore outweigh those ones that we're discussing here tonight.
Do they? I mean, they-
They do.
Outside the, outside, well, so there would be no, no um, do you anticipate in the rural areas the, there's be no association affected, no association? I guess like an HOA type thing?
No.
No.
And that's the problem we're running, that's the-
Some type of agreement between the property owners, they have to agree on how to maintain that road, no matter what you call it.
Yeah, and that's uh, goes back to the gentleman agreement on a lot of these. Some of them called out on the deeds, as how it's made.
And then you have Mr. DOT say that that's a problem. Or they don't agree, or they live in random states, and there's no connection.
And there is civil action that can be taken to remedy, remedy the issue. And the same thing, if you have a wreck on a private road, law enforcement, unless you petition the deputy sheriff prior to that to patrol those roads and got the, the authorization from the property owners, law enforcement's not gonna come out and do an investigation. They may come out and document what happened, but they're not gonna investigate it. It turns into a civil matter because you're on private roads. Just like law enforcement's not gonna pull me over on a private road for me driving a unlicensed vehicle, because they, they don't have access to get inside to that area.
But if there was a right of way, wouldn't they?
No.
Wow.
James, um, I'll let it go this route. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Private roads are only for the individuals that live on that road or individuals that have been given a, a, access, or verbal access to that road, or explicit access to that road.
Private roads that are not gated are generally for the people that live in that area. But if they are not gated, there is the ability for the public to go in it, by lack of a gate. There's definitely not somebody standing there checking, right?
So let's step it further. When that person goes in, that unwanted person goes in, then they're notified they're trespassing.
They can be.
Right. If they come back again, what happens?
So that's the sheriff's office that responds.
Okay, well, I can tell you what happens. They then, because they've been notified, they've been trespassing, when they come back again, they are actively trespassing, and they are prosecuted as such. So that's the difference between public roads and private roads. Private roads are private. They do not give access to the general public unless the general public is allowed by the property owners to come and access that road. If they deny access to them, and they continue to try to gain access, they can and be prosecuted. That's the difference.
For the postcard question?
Yes.
Mail-in question?
Um, I, I don't think we were voting on that.
We haven't. So let's try to, if we can get back and figure it out. So, I think there's another option, as you get further to figuring out what you actually want to mail, I think we've got some time if we're putting all this together, to have people get notice of something specific instead of something general. So, for, at the next planning commission meeting, whenever that would be, if it's July, or August, or September, when you want, we can put that on, and that, and kind of get something specific for that time. So you might be able to table this for a little bit if you wanted to, and come back to it as you kind of-
Postpone it.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask uh, Mrs. Spicer if she wants to withdraw her amendment.
Yeah, based on that information, yeah, I'd like to, is it postponed or tabled?
You could, so do you table it?
Withdraw it to the next meeting, and then you can represent it.
At a later time.
Represent it.
Bring it up at a later time, whenever they-
Yeah. Withdrawal is just, we're canceling doing it right now. That's what we're withdrawing.
So you want to postpone?
No, postpone is you have to vote on that. A withdrawal, you just withdraw it. There's no vote.
Oh, I withdraw it? With the intention of doing it later?
Postpone or anything else, you gotta vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that one withdrawn?
Yes.
Wait, okay.
Alright, so now we're back to the original motion, which was-
Look at subdivision, right?
Any changes to Chapter twenty-six, or hold any cha, any changes to Chapter twenty-six until changes in Chapter thirty-two are made prior to sending it to-
Yes, that one.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Is everybody ready to vote?
Could you repeat one more time?
Uh, I made it up, but um-
So no.
Basically to combine the Chapter twenty-six and thirty-two change.
Hold any recommendation to the Transportation Committee or County Council until Chapter thirty-two and Chapter twenty-six have been realigned.
Okay, gotcha.
I was paraphrasing.
Very good, I like that better.
All in favor?
It's unanimous?
Alright.
Now, uh, Mr. Chair, I think it would be this, if you could give me the floor, just for a few minutes to go through some of the discovery process.
How many minutes?
Uh, give me ten minutes, please, sir.
Ten minutes.
So as we've seen from uh, some of the discussion here, private roads are private roads, and when we try taking from those private owners, uh, there's a possibility we're in conflict with the state constitution, and federal constitution, for that matter. Even though things have been done in the past and not been challenged, that does not make them just. Many times, power has been assumed by those who don't have it, either because they did not know, or they willingly knew and done it. We're here tonight to right some of those wrongs. In part of that, I'm hoping to help us understand the difference between the two types of subdivided land in the county. The taking clause that we just went over and reviewed, and understand how we don't have that authority to take from one private owner and give to another private property owner. Assuming powers. You know, the citizens themselves have a duty. Their duty is far greater than just coming and voting. Their duty is also making sure that the governing body is not assuming powers they don't have and resisting such a thing. Our founding fathers were very adamant about that. So how can it be that we're here discussing this? I think it's just an oversight. As I read back through the ordinance, I see that it was pretty well designed for subdivisions. And many people here, when I say subdivision, the first thing that comes to their mind is like a, like I stated before, that road will houses evenly spaced. And that's what's in our mind, but we don't think about the dirt roads. We don't think about how this ordinance now requires, if it goes past a certain amount and it's upgraded to a road, to be a paved road. Some of you out there don't know how long a paved road would last in a farm area. I can tell you right now, if I was to drive my crawler of a paved road to get to the other field, it wouldn't last too long at all. So there's a reason for dirt roads, there's a reason for private roads, and there's a reason for two types of subdivisions. The problem that we're doing is I think we've established private roads are private. The only ones that have access to private roads are those individuals that own property on those private roads, unless access is given to, given to them from the property owners. So we can, we really can't holler about security or safety uh, because these are individuals that have come together and made a decision as property owners. They understand the risk. So getting into the nuts and bolts of it, uh, first thing is, a good example of more private roads in this uh, road ordinance has not taken into account to the uh, the property owners in the rural areas that's not in subdivisions. Uh, so, twenty-six, two, C. James, can you read that out to us?
The whole thing?
Uh, no, just C.
Okay. Private roads shall provide vehicular access and road frontage to developments or sections of developments containing more than ten dwellings. All private, non-dedicated roads shall be prominently indicated as such on plats prior to subdivision approval. Maintenance arrangements for such roads must be noted in writing on subdivision plats and manuals, and must be subsequently reported. The developments serviced by a private road shall have direct access to, into a public road, and no such private road shall be laid out so as to serve property outside of the development, to serve uh, property outside the development. All private roads shall, and then the list goes on.
Right. So, development, the definition of development is, do you know that definition offhand?
Uh, no.
Okay. It, it's basically the modifying of land?
Yep.
Okay. So what it's not taking into account for is those roads were, a person may own seven lots and not be developing those lots. Uh, the other thing is, it uh, it also goes into, no such private road shall lay out as to serve property outside of development. Well, who decides what the development is on that private road, in that rural area? Can you answer that, James?
So it would be all parcels that are, have access to that road, so if they have any frontage on it, then they are potentially served by, so if any of them's a subdivision of that property, you either need to maintain access off of that private road, or extend the private road to continue access.
So my motion is, uh, just to simplify this, is to private roads shall contain more than ten dwellings, take out everything else, and all private roads shall. And I'm sorry, not dwellings, lots. We had amendment, a change to that, it's lots.
Dwellings on private routes, or private drives, right? Hold on a minute.
I don't think we touched, uh-
Are you making a motion?
Yes, that is my motion.
Are you gonna make a motion for just C or, or everything?
Well, do y'all want me to do it for everything, or you want me to just go one at a time?
I think we should do everything under C.
Everything under C, okay. Uh, can you, before I go any further, can you pull up uh, Section fifty-six dash five, dash uh, six-three-one-zero of SC code?
Fifty-six-five. Sorry, what was that?
Uh, actually, you've got it already pulled up. It's in the backup material, yep.
Oh, the backup one?
Yes. You know what I'm gonna ask?
Ask?
Can you read it out to us?
Yes. The provisions of Chapters one, three, five, seven, nine, and ten of Title fifty-six shall be applicable to private roads if the owner, including any corporation, or homeowner's association, holding title to community roads and excluding those only holding easements over such roads, shall file a written consent stating that the undersigned is the owner of the private roads shown on the attached plaque, and consents to the application of the provisions of this chapter for purposes of highway safety on such private roads. When the road is owned by two abutting owners, both shall consent to the application of this chapter. In the event there are more than two owners on the road, of the road, the provisions of this chapter shall apply when a majority of those owners of the total front footage abutting such roads shall consent thereto. The consent shall be executed with the same formalities as a deed, and with the plaque shall be filed with the clerk of court or register of deeds for the county in which the private road is located, and with the sheriff of such county. No deliberation clause shall be required. Such filings shall not constitute a dedication to the public of such roads, nor shall it constitute permission by the owner for the public to use such roads. The written consent shall become effective thirty days from the date it is filed with the clerk of court or register deeds.
Okay. And Chapters one, three, five, and seven, nine, and ten deal with driver's license, motor vehicle registration, Uniform Act regulating traffic, traffic tickets, motor vehicle financial responsibility, motor vehicle registration, and financial responsibility. So when we get to talking about safety, I think this is a good example of even the state does not see private roads as a safety issue, issue. Uh, for if they did, they would not say that in order for the sheriff to act upon these items in these chapters, they would need permission from the owners, signed permission, recorded permission. And actually, the section below it gives them the means to uh, claw back that permission, to take it away if they desire. So going forward with that in mind, uh, and how private roads are private roads, I would like to add, James, can you go to the uh, what Mr. Root had edited for us? Right there. I would like to transfer item four over to the private road chapter. And remove item three and four.
From under C?
Yes.
Start going back and forth. Okay, so. Item four. And then remove
three and four. And E is design of road criteria where it's fifty foot for minor roads. Get it right away. And R deals with sidewalks, I think. And F, I guess they have one. So right here's where the pavement is required and all, the road construction. That needs pulled out.
Wait, see, wait a minute. You're amending, are we amending Charlie three and four, or we're amending F as well?
Oh.
Three and four reference.
Yeah, once that it was just.
So you're just saying we don't need to force private roads to be paved?
Correct.
In the country?
Right now.
Okay. They skipped Charlie one and two, and they're not gonna change those at all?
We've already modified our, yes. So minimum road right away is what I want to discuss tonight. You know, we talked about utility easements and the only thing that I know the state requires when you buy a piece of property is the ingress and egress. We've got a state man here. He does not require the utility easements. And, you know, many people up here, I've heard come up here and they talk about utility easements, but these same people I've heard talk about urban sprawl. Well, the utility easements that you're putting in place are a pathway to urban sprawl. Because if the property owner had not granted that, then more than likely that back fifty acres would be not appealing to a developer because he would not have the easements on that private property, on that private road. The other thing is, when we say we put in a fifty-foot right of way and that right of way on that private property includes a utility easement, which is not a requirement for a property, and we've already established that that property only serves other private property owners, I would say we're in violation of statute. Because it benefits the others and you're taking from one or two without compensation. So therefore, if you go to the little sketch.
Clear zone?
Yes, clear zone, or the one before that. Yes, right there. So in this, if we go back to the chart, I don't know if you got the chart also. So keep these numbers in mind. Nine foot, four foot shoulder, two foot of a paved shoulder plus the other two foot unpaved if it's a paved road. And the seven foot clears on either side. Can you go back up to the diagram? So here's the decision we need to make. We pulled the items over from four, which states that the road width has to be twenty foot. And that twenty foot is in accordance with the IFC standards. For public roads, there's nothing in the International Park Code for private roads. The, so that covers the travelway. The shoulder is used for a recovery area or to just park off the side. The thing that I've struggled with is, should we require more than the lots needed to ensure that they can get their home insured in fire protection to it? Should we require that additional roadway? Because we've established in this ordinance that the water has to shed from the road surface and cannot puddle on it. So however they achieve that, that's all that matters. We've established the twenty-foot hard pack. But do we need to go further than that? I'd like some discussion.
You said hard pack. Now which is the hard pack, the travelway or the roadway?
Uh, travelway.
Thank you. And then are you including the shoulder?
Uh, the twenty-foot hard pack does not include the shoulder. It's pretty much up what we've done in on the private driveways is we said have a minimum driving surface of twenty foot with no less than five inches of hard pack and a minimum height clearance of thirteen and a half foot.
Rick, what he's trying to decide is Charlie two. Should it be thirty feet? Should it be fifty feet? Should it be twenty feet, which is what the roadway is?
Or should we make it the same as private drives?
What are the IFC standards? What does it say?
It only deals with public roads.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'm finding a hard time, I'm having a hard time following the changes you want to make. It's like you're picking and you're choosing and you're go to this graph, go to that graph. I think Mr. Next, Nick suggested at the last meeting that you get a plan and you highlight the changes and we could put it in the agenda, at least so the public, it'll be more fair to the public so we know what you're talking about. But to kind of do this piecemeal and then take this out, I need to, I need to study it and I need to absorb it. And I'd also like to add that going back to the functions of our planning commission, we need a plan that's gonna promote the public health, safety of our county and these planning elements must be based on comprehensive surveys and studies, not just because you think it's better or this number is better or this might work. Justify it, get the data, get the surveys and let's get some science behind it, but this is a lot of opinion.
It's, it's, you get the science behind it. I think we heard that back during COVID, get the science behind it. Trust me, the government. Here's the science behind it.
Well, Mickey, you are the governor, so we're supposed to trust you.
No, I'm not the government.
What are the opinions?
That's why I'm having the discussion.
You are, you are a government official sitting up here.
I am a government official and I'm telling you.
So you're asking people to trust your opinion to make these changes, and I'm saying justify it.
No, what I'm saying is, we have overreached and I'm trying to pull a pack. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, prove it. Who, where is the outrage in the county of an overreach? Who's out there complaining?
Well, here's, here's, here's the, here's the outreach. Right here. Because the people put us up here in this position because they were outraged with the decisions made in the county. That's why they're not out in the audience, because they trust in our decisions to do the right thing.
I think they know you're making this decision. I don't think so.
I guarantee you they know.
Well, then let's hear from them and let's get some surveys and let's get some studies.
They got other stuff, they put us up here. That's why we are a representative government. We are a republic.
You're an appointed member, you're not an elected official.
We are a representative government, we are a republic, but anyway.
Can I make a motion to adjourn because it's already eight o'clock? This is a very comprehensive issue which takes a lot of time and study.
And that's.
And it's very confusing the way it's been presented. So come back, do it in a concise way, have the ordinance, highlight your change, propose the change. That way the public will know what you're talking about ahead of time.
That's why we're not gonna send anything up until all the proposals are made. We cannot just come up here and in a few hours decide how this needs to be done. We need to go through the process, we need to debate the process. It took four months for the federal constitution to be debated on and we get in a rush and want to complete things in one day, in two hours. And it's not right because this greatly affects private property owners.
I agree with you. Let's take it slow, let's take.
Okay, let's take it slow.
But that's why tonight you want to make these changes and ask, it's like, can't do it.
We're not making the changes.
We're not making the changes.
You want to take something out, you want to cancel this, you want to look at that? I can't follow what you're saying.
Well, once we get done, this will be written up by Mr. Root. Or.
I can't vote on something I can't understand, so before it goes to Mr. Root, come back with your plan.
Then don't vote. All right. So. I'll make it simple for you. Let's leave it the same, twenty-foot right of way, thirteen and a half foot clearance, mirror what was in the private drives.
So, wait a minute. So you want Charlie two to read have a minimum road right of way of twenty feet?
Correct, thirteen and a half foot clearance plus the amendment.
But that's already, that's already gonna be in the insert B four part. So Charlie two is just gonna change from fifty to twenty.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I know you're halfway through your motion. You do have a privileged motion to adjourn on the floor that was made, that just.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
You don't require a second, it is a privileged motion.
We'll take a vote.
Just take a vote and then we can.
All in favor of adjourning? All opposed?
Oh, shoot, fails. But I just need to get that back so we can get back on track, okay?
Thanks for keeping us.
Sorry.
And I do agree, Teresa, that I'm kind of keeping up right now, but if we start getting too much further behind. But I think we need to discuss this some more so that Mickey can get stuff on paper. He's asking for our input, whether he agrees with it or not. He's asking for it and he wants to discuss it, so let's discuss it.
But he's saying let's do this number and then send it to Root. I'm saying we're not ready to send it to Root either.
Well, I agree, we're not sending it to Root yet.
And I don't think the public can follow.
We may not even vote on it tonight, but let's discuss it, let's discuss the numbers. So Mickey, if you can just move down Charlie.
Correct.
I know you jumped to three and four, but you did that because you wanted to go ahead and establish the driving surface and then go back to discuss the right of way piece.
So the right.
Now the right of way piece is up for discussion.
Right, and that's.
And what you're proposing is that we have nothing but the road surface as the right of way.
What's required and it's up to the property owners to achieve the drainage.
Manage the drainage.
To manage the drainage, to manage anything outside of that twenty foot.
All right, what else?
Or the other thing we can do is go back to chapter fourteen because I've not heard any input on this yet, which would give us a total of thirty-two foot right of way in total for roads. So that gives you your seven-foot viewing lane to both sides. That gives you the shoulder and it falls in line with chapter fourteen of the local roads and streets. So I'm asking for input. I prefer the less restricted on the property owner, let them decide. But we need to decide so we can get this down in writing, so we can give it out to the public. So at the next meeting, they can see what we're proposing, which direction we're gonna go in. Or we could come back to this one another time.
Has anybody here read chapter fourteen?
So your proposal is a, a either twenty feet or thirty-two feet?
Correct.
Or somewhere in between.
Yeah, or somewhere in between.
I, I, I'm, I'm gonna say it, I, this is getting confusing, okay? I need it on a whiteboard.
Well, that's why we're discussing it, so we can get it.
I know, but, but the problem is seeing all this stuff
Yeah.
to discuss it.
Right.
Okay, you know what I mean?
I hate to interrupt you, but this started as a motion and we've got about three or four steps into it now, but we're asking for discussion as part of the motion. Do you want to end the motion and make a motion and then start discussion?
Okay.
I apologize. Do you know any plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So my motion is, let's see, where are we at Dave?
So we're modifying Charlie to remove provided vehicular access and road frontage to developments or sections of developments. And also to remove from all private, just the word non-dedicated, all private roads. Remove non-dedicated and then we're, we're taking Charlie three and four and under private roads and we're deleting that and inserting Bravo four from private drives.
Correct.
And then we're taking number two and we're gonna modify that to a width of twenty feet or something. We'll put it down twenty feet and then that gives us something to discuss.
So the motion is to actually, with that, the motion would be to remove item two totally. Because we have the road width established as it is over in the private drive section.
The private drive serves a maximum of ten dwellings. The private road serves a minimum of eleven to infinity. So how can you justify a smaller right of way for more houses?
It's not a smaller right of way and it's not.
Twenty feet is smaller than fifty, you just said twenty.
Where do you see, oh, you're talking about on the roads.
That's what we're talking about.
Where does fifty come from?
Fifty's been there since 2008, I believe.
Yes, but where is it at in state code? Even in state code, it's not asking for fifty. That's the problem. It's, even with state code, it doesn't require fifty. And that's for public roads.
I think you leave the right of way number in to be consistent with the structure of Bravo private drives. Unless you're gonna delete that one too.
Where do you see right of way in the private drives?
Number two, Bravo two.
Okay, yes, we did change that to twenty, you're right. So let's, let's get something on paper. I would like to make, have the minimum right of way reflect what the state, local roads and streets for Route one, which would be thirty-two foot. Thirty-two feet?
If you don't want twenty, you want thirty-two.
Let's go with thirty-two feet and that would be married with.
That's Charlie two.
Uh, Charlie two.
That's correct. Thirty-two? Charlie two.
Group one on that chart? Got that? Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So that is my motion.
Are you gonna change anything else in Charlie?
Yes.
Well, let's keep going.
So down in Charlie five, we've got be maintained by association of property owners or developer and be designed on all plats recorded. So the problem is, once again, this is written for subdivisions. And you can have a property owner that owns more than eleven lots. So we need to add in there, actually, we need to put the same verbiage in Charlie five and copy it from where's the maintenance standard over here? From Charlie five on the other side.
Bravo five.
Uh, Bravo five, I'm sorry.
So you have to delete char, the current Charlie five and insert Bravo five?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, not entirely delete. It, it's.
All right.
Hold on. We need to include the individual in Charlie five from Bravo five. But I want to leave in that we record on the plats.
That's why I asked you to bring your red mark last time.
Yeah.
I understand. But see, even if I brought a red mark, we'd still be doing this.
Well, no, but we had to be arguing over something that we always could see.
Okay. So my motion is to add in individual associating, individual in front of association of property owners.
It says by an individual.
So match, this is Bravo five as.
So be maintained by an individual, comma, association of property owners, comma, or the developer, comma, and be designated. Is that what you want?
Correct. And it to be recorded. I think that's where a lot of the issues come in is.
Sorry, you wanted to change the commonly held to what? I'm sorry, I just missed it on the line.
So he wants, he wants to take the front end of Bravo five.
Yep.
Be maintained by an individual.
Association of property owners.
And then comma, by an associated property owners or the developer.
Right.
All three.
Okay.
There's only two right now. He wants all three of those entities in Charlie five.
James, Charlie seven.
Yes.
What does that pertain to?
That it's panderstegged or that there is a easement.
Okay. So with that, not be duplicated because you've already.
Can, before you go to seven.
Yes, sir.
Can we go back to five?
Yes, sir.
You're assuming on this that they have covenants and restrictions. And you're saying record and appropriate deeds. Well, that's not where this stuff is recorded. This, that's not where this stuff goes. It's not in the, it's not in the deed.
It, it actually would be in the deed.
You better go talk to a real estate lawyer before you go doing that, okay? I, I had, I had a three-hour lecture today about that. That's, there's, there's other places that it goes when you, because this sort of thing is going to affect what your lender's going to do. Correct? What your insurance is going to do. But it doesn't go in the deed. And, and you, and you better, you, you need to talk to a real estate attorney about that. Where, where, where exactly that goes. And you're, you're, and you're assuming they have covenants and restrictions.
So is it wrong now? It's written?
Yes.
So what should we take out?
I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. This, that's way above my pay grade.
So it's, it's wrong right now. That's what Rick's saying. It don't work right now.
Put your opinion, James, on five?
On five?
That's what he's talking about.
Do we have any realtors in the audience?
No, you need a real estate lawyer, not a realtor.
James is weighing in on five.
The easiest place for it to be seen and shown is on the plat, that all property owners have agreed. You can also report it as a separate agreement. So you could put it in the registered deeds office as a maintenance agreement for where ABC wrote. It can also be mentioned in the deeds that there is, so it can be subject to the agreement that's listed and recorded separately in reference to a book and page number. Typically, most people are going to look at a plat. So if it's on a plat, that's the place that most people are going to see it the most commonly. If it's in the deeds, you might have a deed that's two pages and it's pretty easy to see. You might have one on 13 pages and you kind of glance over it, eyes glaze over it.
Well, the appropriate, the appropriate issue wiggle room. Or appropriately executed. So. Means you may or may not require it to be there. Does that say all plats?
Right. Which it, where it needs to be, because if you buy that property, you would want to know ahead of time that you have a maintenance agreement that you're responsible for. Or are you saying just?
I was, I was told that they don't put it in the deeds. There's another place in the closing where they have that.
Maybe it might also be on a real estate disclosure as well.
But I thought your point with the rural communities were these, there wouldn't be formal association, just kind of a handshake agreement. So this is, isn't this, does this jive with?
Yeah, a covenants, covenants and restrictions is not a handshake.
No, it's not. And this is a maintenance degree, agreement similar to the maintenance. Okay, let, let's simplify. Uh, actually, I'll make a motion to bring Kyle.
Second. All in favor? We've got all favors.
Who's second in the motion?
Uh, thank you. Thank y'all for the, name's Kyle Reed, Roads and Bridges.
When dealing with maintenance agreements, Kyle, where do you generally see them? Where do you recommend them being?
Oh, Lord. Um, when we get them, it's in a deed, send along deed.
Would it behoove us to also have them on the plat?
There's, it, it depends on what you require for that plat because a lot of plats, they, they have a kind of catch-all phrase about easements, that kind of thing. But, you know, if you require any and all, um, then maybe, but that would be more of a David question. But yeah, generally, um, it's easier to find, yes, sir.
Why would you want to record a maintenance requirement?
It runs with land.
So it stays with land. So if the land gets sold, then the buyer knows that he has a possibly a responsibility for maintaining that private road.
Possibly. Again, we're getting legally some money. But yeah, yeah, I mean, that's from, from the guidance that I've been given. You, you get a deed, you record that deed because it gives prior notice to anybody else that's purchasing that land.
So one of the biggest problems you see would, would it be because there is no maintenance requirement on these private roads that you called out to?
Uh, yes, a lot like what Mr. Smith was talking about, a lot, you know, they wash out the road and that kind of stuff. Or somebody can't get down them and they're stuck or something like that. So yes, sir. More and more maintenance than anything.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I honestly think we need the restrictions in there because let, let's say you're, or the landowner and you're dividing that land out and you're, you're stating that I don't want any large vehicles down through this easement or I do not want, uh, school buses. Or mail for that.
Your original intent to modify this Charlie five was only to add an individual.
Right.
Because it's, it might not be an association of property owners or the developer since it's.
Right.
Just in that owner out in the boonies or whatever, so.
But are you reading developer as always being commercial? Maybe the landowner is the developer.
Well, he may not be developing his property. He may just be buying.
Right, association of prop, isn't your issue the word developer here?
My issue.
Of property owners or the developer. If I own the 50 acres and I subdivide or divide, I'm developing.
You're, you're assuming that you're subdividing. You, you may have bought 11 lots.
Right.
And if you bought 11 lots, the way this ordinance is written, it would be serving 11 lots. Am I thinking about this right, James?
If you bought all 11 lots and it was serving exactly 11, yes, you also would have the option of combining those or giving a lot lines and serving one.
But if you did that, then you'd have an issue in the future if you had to sell off those lots, correct?
Oh, yeah. If you wanted to keep them, you, you.
Right.
That's prerogative.
Right. So it's, right now, it could be just an individual that owns 11 lots and holding them.
Or not. I mean, it depends.
Yeah. And then it falls into a different category. And I think that's why it's important that we put individual in there. So my motion is to add individual to that.
Keep it moving forward.
Yep. All right. Let's move forward. Let's get out of here.
Just give us something to cut on next time.
Yep.
We'll get them to put it in red.
Was that the last one?
Nope, one more. Almost done. This is something I think that needs to be in there and this is protection of those owners who are going to buy that property. So the road right of way shown on this plat shall be a private road that either does or does not meet public road.
Where, where is this going?
Oh, it's, uh, uh, C10, Charlie 10.
All right. Charlie 10, the capitalized portion.
If, yes, the portion in quotes, right past private roads, comma.
Okay.
I think we need to put some verbiage in there and we'll get Mr. Root to work on this. Where it states that it does or does not meet, uh, public road requirements.
Read it, read your change.
Okay, my change is the road right of way shown on this plat shall be private roads, comma. And does, you'd put does or does not meet public road requirements, comma. And then continue out the rest of it.
So you're deleting maintain or supervise that on?
No, no, no. All that's staying in there.
He's just adding a phrase.
Yeah, I'm adding a phrase.
Does not meet public road requirements.
So basically what we're doing is giving the individuals that move on to that road, that, that knowledge that this road does not meet.
Private road standards?
Public road.
Public road standards.
Public road standards. Now, number 11.
That was the last one.
Is the last one. And I need Mr. Root to research that code of law to decide if we can enforce that on the property owners.
I don't think you can.
On the private property owners.
Just reading.
Yep.
What he's given us already. So you're debating on whether to delete number 11 or not?
Delete number 11. I need input from Mr. Root.
Okay.
And that is all of the motions I have.
All right. So are you going to come up with a, uh, a motion on how to change chapter 32? Next, or are we going to save that for another meeting?
Honestly, what I'd like to do with chapter 32 is for us to form a committee and get Kyle, the, uh, bar marshal, bar chief, all of us sit down and go through that and review it and make sure it encompasses everything it needs to for it to be inside of a subdivision. And.
So it sounds to me like this is going to take a couple of meetings.
Yes.
Next meeting would be bring this back red marked, discuss it, vote on it. Chapter 26 Charlie. Two, 26 two Charlie. As we discussed here and marked up. And then the meeting after that, form a committee to review chapter 32.
Correct.
Something of that nature and want to discuss that with Mr. Johnson.
Right.
Are we done?
Is that all a motion or?
We've got a motion on the floor.
Yep, we've got a motion on the floor.
Is that, is that a motion or?
No, the motion was for the changes.
The motion is what we just did with, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, you're right.
Are we going to vote on that tonight? I thought we were going to.
Well, we need to get it put in, in legal verbiage so that we can look at it and view it.
We need to put it in a motion so David will look at it.
Okay, I'll second the motion for.
Do we have to put this in a motion for Mr. Root? Do we have to put this in a motion?
I think he just, you know.
All right, I'll second the motion for Mr. Root to draft up what we proposed and bring it back to the next meeting. Any discussion?
I appreciate the passion behind this, but I'm not comfortable with the lack of transparency or, or I guess heads up to the public so they could see what you were talking about. It just seemed random and a little scattered for me. I think going back and doing some homework to justify the why, I'm not clear on the why any of these changes should be made other than a very strong opinion. And I do appreciate your passion for this, so I'll, um.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.